Please. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the like of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call please.
Don.
Here.
Wanda.
Here.
Sherry.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
Joe.
Here. We have quorum. At this time, would there be any commissioner that has a reason to abstain for financial or non-financial conflict of interest?
I'm gonna abstain from the vote on West. Eleventh Street Road.
Okay, and I don't expect that we'll have a, I don't expect we'll approve anything tonight, but I think we need to just get that framework done, so.
Well, I'm not gonna abstain from the conversation about.
I will not be able to. Vote on or discuss the claims due to the way that the claims were put together because my office is listed on page three of the claims.
Okay.
I do not have a conflict.
Okay. With that, we're gonna look for approval of agenda before doing so. I have an item to add under five A. We need to declare a state of emergency for the county. As the governor has declared a state of emergency for the state, we need to do so at the county level, so entities affected. Can get their, their claims into FEMA and such, so I'll do that under five A if that works for everybody.
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of five A state of emergency declaration for you in the county.
Second.
Motion and a second further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. At this time, welcome public comment if anybody in the audience would care to make a general public comment. Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. We'll move on to item five. Appoint new mental illness board member. Welcome.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Lucy Levno. I'm the chair for the Board of Mental Illness and I will be losing Mark Katterhagen from my board this, in July, July first. He can only sit two, three-year terms and those are up in July, so I'm asking the commission to approve Val Larson as a chief board member for the Board of Mental Illness. Val's been out of HSC for thirty-five years, retired, she's a native of Yankton, our kids are natives of Yankton, so. Some of you all need to know, I'm not sure, but I've approached her, she's willing to do it. I have a signed oath from her, I'm not sure, did I send that to you?
Yeah.
I haven't gotten it yet.
In the pack.
The signed oath that she signed with regards to that, so I'd ask the commission to approve her.
I'll give it.
Any questions from the commission?
I'd make a motion to approve Val Larson. Appoint her to the mental illness board.
Is that for three years?
For three-year term.
It'll be three, and then I would have to come before you to give her proof for the second year, second term if she'd wanna.
Motion by Clemish, second by Kettering. To approve Val Larson to sit on the mental illness board. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'll get the copy, but that's fine.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna go on to five A, state of emergency somewhere.
Thank you for getting me in so short notice. Everybody should have got a copy of the declaration that was sent out or given out. We just actually got it wrote here in the last half hour or so, so it's here. One of the things that with the storm that we had last week, a lot of power lines, like utilities are having some issues. A lot of issues, if you will, and we're asked that we do a state of an emergency or declare one for the Yankton County. So I presented to you, one to you, in front of you, whereas in May twelfth, two thousand twenty-two in Yankton, South Dakota, or excuse me, Yankton County, South Dakota, severe weather pattern impacted the population of Yankton County and its municipalities that resulted in a significant public property damage and the risk to Yankton County residents' lives. And where Yankton County has evaluated all available resources needed to mitigate damages to the public property and assure the safety of the Yankton County residents, Yankton County found that its limited financial resources will be expended within a very short period of time. And whereas the total cost of repairs and improvements are not yet fully known, but estimated to be in excess to what local resources are able to provide. And whereas the result, damage and destruction will endanger and threaten the life, excuse me, the health, safety and welfare of the public and the financial stability of local government units, u- units. Utility companies and power company cooperatives in general. Whereas the Yankton County Department of Emergency Management requests that the Yankton County Board of Commissioners declare a state of an emergency for a severe weather pattern event for May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. Now therefore be resolved, the Board of Yankton County Commissioners hereby declare that Yankton County in a state of emergency for conditions resulting from a severe weather event on May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, sign this date. So with that, just a quick, just to give you a couple of seconds and I'll get out of here. We've had some requests, the state sent out some information in your packet, there's a form that looks like this. We have to reach for our county ninety-five thousand change for our threshold, that's four dollars and ten cents per capita. And according to one of the power companies, they've already reached that. So we've got some stuff from BY Electric, they're over twelve thousand dollars, East River Electric is the one at ninety-five thousand, we have not heard from Play Union. But the other pages that I gave to you, there are deadlines that this stuff has to be sent in, so we were trying to get here to get this done so they can start submitting their paperwork. Questions? I mean, it's.
Um, Paul, I know we got a lot of utility companies, but you know, like I sent you, you know, there's some private damage to you and you, and encourage those individuals to call two-one-one and report.
Yep.
The damage.
Yes, that, that was my, after we get this on that's.
Unfortunately, we've been through this too many times.
Yep. So, yes, we encourage people right now in Yankton County, I didn't print this off, I just got it, it's hot off the press, Yankton County right so far has had twenty-two people who've called the two-one-one helpline. With damages to their property, businesses, and stuff like that, and if there's any more out there, we encourage you to do that. Right now, if that helps with the individual assistance, if we would meet the requirements by doing this declaration, if we're just one more step closer to that possibly happening. And I use the word possible, but we don't know, if you have damages, we can't, you know, help in that matter. So anyway, I ask that you approve this declaration and we'll send a copy of the computer right away so that we can keep moving forward as time goes on.
I would move to approve the resolution.
Second. Motion by Fox, second by Clemish to approve the resolution, it's twenty-two oh-three, declaring a state of emergency for the windstorm spring of twenty-two. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
I thought this was gonna be the year with no emergency declaration.
Actually, I thought we're gonna have a drought. Alright, I don't have any questions, that's all I have right now.
No, keep on, thank you, Paul. Keep us in the.
Thank you.
Straight and narrow. Give Patty a minute, but we'll begin discussions on item six, West Eleventh Street Resolution. So there's a draft resolution in the packet. This by no means is final version. Starting point for, for us as a commission to discuss. And this is gonna impact two things, this is gonna impact the West Eleventh Street that's in front of us, but the intent is also to set some framework. So if other neighborhoods so chose in the future, they would have some guidelines that they would, would be able to tell if their project could go forward or not, or what they would need to do.
Yep, the bar would be set. So there's some, some language that's in red that we need to discuss. Probably the, the biggest part of the discussion revolves around what percentage of the people living in that area do we require to want this? Is that ninety percent? Is that a hundred percent? And if it's something lower than a hundred percent, are we willing to require people who are not in favor of it to pay the taxes as well? In this situation, all of the residents who are living there have said yes. And people who are beyond the three hundred feet have said yes, so this one, I don't wanna say this one's easy. But we need to view it as if we have two or three people who don't agree, and that's the discussion we really need to have.
Well, along the same area, aren't there some farmland, isn't there some farmland which may or may not be willing to cough up money for the road?
Yes, there are three. The, the Benedictine Sisters actually own two different parcels of farmland. They have agreed to pay for one of those parcels, not the other. So we have that parcel that would not be paying, and then we have two other parcels that those owners have, have said that they don't want to participate. So, and farmland is a little
vague.
A little vague in the law. Deb, I don't know if you noticed anywhere where it outright said you can't tax it or you can, I didn't see it clarified.
Didn't really find anything that said you can't, but it's typically excluded in other places when you're talking about a taxation where it's treated differently, and so again, when we looked at it, our position would kind of be to err on the side of, I don't know that you can force ag land into this agreement.
But can we? Let's say Farmer A decides that after this road is in that he wants to develop it. And what at that point can we make him retroactively pay?
I don't know that you can make him retroactive, but I think he joins in on how, you know, would get added to.
The same assessment.
Same assessment. And that was language that again, I think we just have to be very careful. We highlighted just that we're very leery of the primary residence language.
Yep.
Because if you look at how a primary residence is statutorily referred to, then that would not include things like vaca-, you know, like a vacation home. Or possibly like an egg business, I don't know if we're gonna have an issue with that. So we just, as you go through it, you're just gonna have to be very careful with the language so that we make sure that we don't have a loophole that later on comes back and puts a certain position where the county can't assess that piece of property.
So an example of what Deb is talking about is in item four in that draft resolution, the word primary should be replaced by just residential.
We think just residential.
And it later in that same paragraph, there's a primary residence to change to residential or commercial structure. And item six, very similar, just delete the words additional primary, so it just says residences. And to go ahead and, and insert the word vacant later in that property, so instead of the residentially, the vacant residentially, and I think that has to do, to your point, Wanda, of vacant parcels, if something's built there, you're included. Because when someone buys a parcel going forward, they should be alerted that there's, there's a tax in this area that would be applied.
I don't think we should call it a tax, I think we should call it an assessment.
An assessment, okay.
So.
Taxation, so, so harsh.
So negative.
I'll take one minute if I'll get some comments.
And what's the, what's the mechanism, I guess, that we're, we're using, we're, we're.
To trigger?
Well, we're adding an, an extra, it's a voluntary assessment on, and I, I guess where in the law does it allow us to do that?
So those were the sections that are in there right now with the thirty-one thirteen.
My only question wi- with that, and I, I did read that, but that's talking about townships. And right, thirty-one dash thirteen is, it specifically lists townships, and I get that, that's an unorganized township, so the county
Correct.
Is, is over top of that, but it doesn't, it doesn't list that as far as I'm aware, maybe I missed it as something that counties can do specifically, right?
You can if there's no township that does it, you're, you're sitting in their spot.
So in the future, if this were to be presented in an organized township, it would be up to the township.
Be up to the township.
Holy to do so, it would not be in our plate.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I think I'm gonna pause this discussion just for a minute, because there's people here specific to West Eleventh. And I wanna get any comments they might have. And then they can either stay to listen for more or leave if you want. Some of this is gonna directly impact you, some of it's just gonna be figuring out details for potential future projects, so with that.
Just to clarify on that, farmland, sisters on the north side of the line.
Yep.
And Sacred Heart has another plot there, and they dug up and gave us the old piece of sacred.
One of those too.
Correct.
So. That.
So there's five.
That farmland to the east is all, all say, has given their permission to go ahead and do that.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yes.
Now Bob Macy.
And did you say your name?
Did I miss it?
Mr. Shensky.
Oh, okay. So the sisters own two separate tax lots. Okay, so what we're, we're saying is we're listing tax lots in here that will be assessed. One of theirs will be assessed, the others, other will not, unless they have agreed to pay for two.
Yeah, the Sacred Heart.
Sacred Heart separate.
And then Sacred, Sacred Heart is, is separate from Abera. Yep, so you've, you've got the Benedictine Sisters, the Benedictine Sisters and Abera.
But the Benedictine Sisters are.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, yep.
And then Bob and I will have to go back to the sisters and see if they're willing to pay for both parcels. Especially both, so this is.
And, and if they're willing to do that, that's fine, but right now.
What is, what are you drawing a circle on?
This is Sacred Hearts.
Okay.
And then this one is a purple, right? The one, I'm just gonna go south and then north is Sisters. The other side, one side of the road is, belongs to Sisters.
There you go, right there.
The other side belongs Sacred Hearts, right here.
No, that one, that one should be Abera.
Yeah.
Yep, Sa- Sacred Heart Health.
Then you go north.
If you go north of there, the sisters have two parcels, one there, and then the next one is theirs.
Yeah. On that road that splits them off is the right of way that we want, that's how we want the payment journey.
Okay, so.
Yep, so the, the reason I think it is fair that they only pay for one is there are homeowners that own vacant lots, and we are not requiring them to pay for the vacant lot. So I think it's unwise if we ask the sisters to pay for two. Yep.
Yep, and Bob Macy, he's, they've moved since Kansas, but he owns, I think, five acres on that south side to the west.
Vacant.
Yeah.
Yep, and we're not including that in this either, so everything that's vacant is excluded.
So.
You bet.
This one is vacant, with a T on it.
Yep, they've got a house on it, so we included that one and they have signed off, that would be the Beckers.
There was another one just got a building from the four long here, that was vacant, I'm trying to figure this one out.
And they're included. Yep, thank you though. Yep, we tried to get ahead of those before we got this all done.
Did you said Macy's house is vacant?
They have two lot, they're.
They had two lots, one had a house which they sold.
And they signed.
And the next owner signed and the other is vacant.
Where Bob lived is vacant.
No, he had two, where Bob was, is sold, and then he also had a vacant lot there as well.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think it's Miles, that one who bought Macy's house.
Right. Cause there's somebody living in Macy's house.
Macy, Macy, right there.
Yeah. And that's.
And that's Maual, so there's Macy Family Trust, there's Maual. And there's Jaeger, so one of those is vacant in there.
So as you read through, we.
Oh, one second. Do, is there any more comments, questions, concerns before we get in the, into the weeds?
Well, the only thing that we'd like to take and add is if we can get weight limit signs on the parcels, or on the both ends.
Great.
Because there's a lot of heavy equipment, there's farm equipment going down that we're gonna take and this goes through, we'll have to talk to them, but if there's weight limit signs there, at least they can be ticketed if they come through.
It sounds like.
Can you state your name for the record?
Conversation.
And I know weight limits is gonna be a
Issue.
An issue, something to discuss, it's gonna be difficult, I think, to put permanent weight limits adjoining ag land, I'm, and again, this is gonna be for not just the West Eleventh, this is gonna have to be for, for everything. Now, spring load limits, I would think, and Mike.
I could go back and look, but I think absolutely every piece of farmland that butched to the West Eleventh Street has another access to it.
Yes, yes, they all do. Except for Sacred Heart, but they can come right off, right at the end of the pavement there. List and laws both claim they do not drive that road with their equipment, and so far I haven't seen.
Never seen him, there's no reason for him to.
Pardon me?
There's no reason for laws to drive that, the way they'd be going out of their way.
But the people that rent from Benedict Convent use it all the time. They've been on it several times this spring, and they've been on it also in the fall and harvest season.
And they can come in from the north.
And they can come in from that north where that, where two lots of Benedict, they have a right of way through there that they can come in off of three fourteen.
I don't worry about farm equipment. Because they, they have an alter, alternate route, what I do worry about is cement trucks.
Yep, I agree, cement trucks. That we have, you know, if we can get a weight limit on those that they bring half loads out when people are building, I don't know.
Constant.
If the, excuse me, can I interrupt there? If those landowners done on that north side, if they're gonna develop that, can't those cement trucks use the right of way from the north entrance, north side?
It's like, yeah, but what if you wanna put a driveway in or something, or an existing home, or, you know what I mean, it wouldn't be.
Somebody would do that on the north side of the highway.
Or even on the, well, anyone along the south.
Both side, yeah.
If anyone along the south wanted to, you know, we're gonna have you know, lumber delivered and, and concrete trucks and.
Yeah, like the plumber in his new house.
Kevin, yeah.
So that's something to consider.
Equipment to.
And he's gonna probably be almost done by the time that we start the road.
I think you also have to consider, and Mike could answer it better, is that something that the county normally regulates? You know, do we, do we have load limits on county roads? I mean, I know we have our spring ones.
Right.
But I don't know that you're, that the county would be in a position to.
Enforce.
Enforce additional restrictions on this piece of road if they can't do it on any other county road.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but the intention with this would be to haul in enough gravel and base where it'd be a sufficient road. Just like any other county blacktop road that would be, you know, designed to the weight of today's trucks, would be the intention. So, I think that, I think to me, that's the best route to move forward. Now again, spring load limits would be a different scenario, but I think it's gonna be complicated to, with future development and concrete trucks and, and even grain trucks, I know they have access to the north and ninety-nine percent of the time they'll probably use that, but.
Well, even with load limits, divisible loads of gravel and concrete and all that are possible, you know, like they've said earlier, half, half a load. So I mean, it's, it's more expensive, but it's possible to do during load limits.
You know, three oh, three oh one would be an example of this, how this road would turn out, and that's what, four or five years old? That sees quite a bit of truck traffic and ag equipment, and it's held up pretty.
Well, we also have a hundred and fifty dollar fee that we pay for, for the maintenance fee of the road too, so something should happen, we should have enough, substantially have enough money.
This slight difference between three oh one and West Eleventh Street is the citizens, the left, West Eleventh Street are paying for the upgrade. The citizens from three oh one didn't, the county did.
I think Joe's point was he, he would like to see a road of similar quality.
Right.
That's what he was referring to.
Yeah, we're not gonna take.
It's hauled in and it's, it's a good base.
We're gonna take the road that's there and just go put a layer of chip seal over it and call it good, it would be, you know, there would be sufficient base and everything.
But as I understand this, the, the citizens that sign up for it or are later assessed as they build homes along there, they're gonna be expected to do part of the maintenance?
I, yes, that's what I would, or how it is today.
And are they doing that on three oh one?
No. Three oh one was a blacktop road before it got ground up, I mean, that was just ma-, that was just maintenance.
What difference does it make?
I guess if you're suggesting we take every road in the county and, I mean, that's what the general taxes are there for, that's what.
I'm just saying that if these people are gonna pay the money to put it in and, and to maintain it, they should have the protection of not having it destroyed by overweight vehicles, if that's possible, no. Deb says it's not possible and I'm fine with that.
And I don't know, I, I just said that would be a concern of mine, that we, we don't put any, we don't put any restrictions in this one, Don, that could come back to the county later and they say, well, you, you can't regulate that road in that fashion because the county can't regulate other county roads in that fashion, so.
My.
Whatever we put in West Eleventh, we wanna make sure is gonna be appropriate and upheld if somebody would challenge that resolution, so.
You know, there's no guarantees that somebody or something can't come destroy a road, but my preference would be to design and build it to handle the, the
Normal.
The normal loads that, that it would see. But.
Is that including semis?
Yeah.
Would we be inclined to take, go to the people that own the farmland that rented out? Cause those are the ones that are using West Eleventh with all their farming equipment?
Oh, if they wanna put a restriction on their renters, that's totally up to them.
Okay, okay, long as we're.
If they have a rental agreement, wanted for, you know, to, to rent their, their ag land, they certainly could put a restriction in there that they have to use a certain. they certainly could put a restriction in there that they have to use a certain road to access the property.
Benedict Convent is the one that's renting the property and they they're paying, so we'll see if they'll put that in their rental agreement. I'll talk to Dale Hanson about.
And que- question uh the west end of the north side of the sisters property. There's uh, I I think there's a road there now, so they can come off of the.
Three fourteen.
Three fourteen, use a a county road that's probably abandoned or whatever. But they have access to that property without coming down.
Exactly, yeah. I went through there, I drove through there the other day and they're gonna have to take and do a little maintenance, but they got the equipment uh to do a little bit of disking today to make sure their trucks and tractors can get through there. It's it's not bad.
It's an undeveloped section line. It's a mile over.
Okay, so we.
Yeah.
Continue some of these road discussions as things come up, but yeah, thank you.
So the, all of the numbers are based on thirty-one thirteen thirty-three and in that it says the resolution sh- shall state the streets to be improved, the general nature of the proposed improvement, the material to be used or materials from which a choice may be made, an estimate of the total cost per linear foot, a description of the classes of lots to be assessed, and the method of apportioning the benefits there too, provided in forty-two through forty-six. And forty-six is the one that allows us to apportion based on benefit, not on front foot. So in lieu of the method of apportionment described in forty-four and forty-five that may be provided uh in the resolution determining the necessity of the improvement that the cost shall be assessed against all accessible lots and tracts of land fronting or abutting or lying within one half block or three hundred feet, whichever is less according to the benefits determined by the Board of Supervisors to accrue to each of such lots. So that would be, and that's listed up above when you, all the whereas is um, that's referenced, but that is is essentially what the statute says is we have the authority to do that. So it outlines the streets, the material, the cost per linear foot. Item four has the thirty-one residentially zoned parcels um and six egg zone parcels listed. Um, it has a column for included, it has a column for not included, excluded until, I need to remove the primary, residents constructed or maybe a s- a structure, structure, something like that. So I'll work with Deb to fine tune all that language. So the, and then down below it has um, it talks about the five egg zone parcels. Two are included, three are not, and we talked about one of those is the sisters in each column. Um, and then we have eight totally residentially zoned parcels uh included that are beyond three hundred feet. So these folks are essentially volunteering to assess themselves of those two, of those parcels, two do not contain residences, we'll take out that primary word, and will not be assessed until residence is constructed upon them. So in all, we have thirty-nine parcels that will be assessed at the beginning. So number five talks about the cost of the project. Um, and it breaks it down to six hundred eighty-five dollars per parcel, beginning with taxes payable in twenty twenty-three. And that would cover five taxation years, assessment years, maybe I should use the word assessment.
So now if empty parcel uh builds three years from now, they will get in on the last two years of this essentially and then all the future.
Whatever's left and then all the future. And so item six talks about addition of residences in the improvement zone. And so that talks about both the residentially and the agriculturally zoned parcels.
So if somebody comes in ten years from now.
They don't have to pay.
They don't have to pay for the original development, but they are gonna have to pay for the ongoing maintenance.
Correct, if it needs to be chip sealed again.
Then it will.
Yes, yeah.
And in that second paragraph in six, there's another primary.
Yes, yep. So I'll do a, I'll do a search for all of those and delete all those.
Yes.
So the north side, oh, it would be, yep, go ahead and click it. The north side has ag zoning, all of it is ag, even those those homes that are sitting there. And e- everything below is residential, so if it's yellow, it's ag, if it's pink.
I think the question though is what is allowed in an ag?
It is. Oh.
Five acre.
So it's not zoned.
Not zoned egg, it's used egg.
Used egg, okay. Well, I need to change the wording on that a little then. I thought yellow was ag.
Um, they have to get a conditional use permit to do that.
For what?
Yeah.
So just a quick.
Residential minimum five acres. So if you want it developed, they have to divide it up into five acre lots. Or they could ask to rezone to what you are zoned, which would be one acre minimum.
So just real quick, uh daycares, dwellings, governmental services, horticulture, modular homes and utility facilities are permitted. Conditional uses, there's gonna be a lot, bed and breakfasts, uh cemetery, home base sales, greenhouses, uh just trying to think anything that would be more commercial that would fit. There's a light manufacturing that would be a CUP uh allowed in that district. Outside of that, nothing. Low density residential.
Structure would be word, and then that agriculturally zoned, I can change to residentially zoned used as agriculture. I'll just change your wording on that, thank you. Okay. So item number seven talks about the continuing maintenance. So future chip sealing, surface painting and other necessary improvement costs will be assessed to the improvement zone as outlined in five and six. The cost of the improvement less the estimated cost for maintaining a gravel surface will be subtracted, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So here's another pointed discussion um is are we willing to take out the cost the county would normally have to maintain that road as gravel? And that's about five, six thousand a year on average over the last three years. I don't, didn't bring my other computer with me. Shoot, I should have wrote that down.
You mean take it out of the one thirty-six?
Well, say, say for example, we need to chip seal this year um and chip seal is gonna cost us twenty-five thousand. And normally it would cost us five thousand dollars a year to maintain that as gravel. So do you amortize that chip seal over five years at five thousand a year and cut out five thousand? So essentially it's a wash and the county should pay for it. You see where I'm getting? So if it costs forty thousand to go in and chip seal it and over those five years, so that's eight thousand a year. County normally only puts five, so the residents would have to chip in three thousand. Or do we stick them with the whole bill and not give them any credit for saving us money?
Well, I don't know that we should give them no credit for saving the county money.
But you see.
I think it should be kind of a win-win.
Yes, I, and I I do think giving them some type of credit for that um. And the first year, I think we look back, it was three thousand dollars and then it was five, and then you put gravel down one year and it was a little more, so we took the average of four to five thousand dollars, something like that.
How many times a week do you grade that road?
Yeah.
But you've been doing, you've been doing it at least once a week, sometimes twice.
That was partially due to a a severe drought, so costs are gonna be higher than average, you know.
So the wording in section seven um needs to be finalized, so that was just a kind of a beginning. And just thinking here, I think we should probably have, like, section nine says others potentially um if in the future the county chooses to end it, or if the township organizes and then it's the township's responsibility um somehow where we end this. I think there should be the ability for the commission to revoke it.
I I'm just just thinking back at history a little bit, this would be a tremendous opportunity to implement Gary Swenson's toll road.
Tell me, send him an email.
I got, I got fourteen today, fourteen emails.
Invite him to the meeting.
So, so I I think we should figure out some way to maybe have some some type of endpoint um two hundred years down the road. It probably isn't gonna be used.
There should be an out for the county or township if they organize or for the residents.
Yeah.
And there should probably be a similar threshold of exit as there is for entering.
Oh, yes, yes, good point, Joe.
Because if if twenty-five years from now, the residents is there saying the county's doing a terrible job on our road, why are we paying this additional assessment? Just let the road fall apart where it's done paying type of deal. So you you need a way to exit if if you wanted to.
If you're unhappy with the future commission, not this commission, of course. So.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, the likelihood if if we address the need for housing, uh that's one of the prime directions that will go. So a developer may have a major interest in upgrading that road.
True.
Yeah, all of the, all of the property along there will improve in value once it's paid.
And then sharing, my only concern was with that attorney general opinion, the difference between improving and maintenance. So that number seven is really what we need to look at because a different part of that statute limits, it used to be eighty cents per linear foot and it went up to two dollars. But are we limited to that? Because now we're not talking improving the road, we're talking about maintaining it.
Yep, I see what you're saying on, so on number seven would be fifty-one, so we're right on number seven. So when I punch the numbers, when you asked me that question and the front foot is a dollar ninety-six as it is right now, and this is, this is a big cost upfront because we're doing so much of the gravel base work to get the road where it needs to be, that's um to make sure that the chip seal lasts as long as it can. So right now, this project is less than two dollars per foot, front foot. Um, I do have some questions on how they count the sides and stuff, but that's not clarified very well in the law.
What codified law covers the linear foot depth that you guys are referencing?
Thirty-one thirteen fifty-one. So there's a whole section and what we are focused on in this is, oh, where's the beginning of it? Oh, here it is. Thir- it begins at thirty-one thirteen thirty-two and runs through fifty. So thirty-two through fifty deals with what we're doing here and then fifty-one and fifty-two and fifty-three. I actually, it's fifty-one, fifty-two deal with the other portion of it, and I can send you the attorney general's opinion if you want to. So you're right on that, Deb.
I think something on seven as well, just to, I don't know if has to be stated or what, but to make sure it's it's um, you know, chip sealing and painting and not snow removal is not included in that cost, cause that's something we'd be doing anyway. Uh, so we have to kind of make sure that which costs were associated.
Surfacing cost, okay, no snow.
Maybe it's just resurfacing costs.
And paint.
Costs associated with resurfacing or something.
Okay, yep, good point. No snow, culverts. Nothing like that.
You know, just a thought and it's a little bit hands-on, it's not a set it and forget it, but you know, like with the ditch board. Um, each of one of those ditch districts are taxed, they tax themselves. And then they meet every year and say, hey, we have, you know, two hundred thousand dollars in our account, let's lower our tax levy or let's raise it uh to pay for maintenance and costs. Now here, that would be part of the county's responsibility. So I don't know if there's a trigger, but it would be nice to have an assessment for future maintenance. But a review process if if uh, you know, there's a half million dollars sitting in that account and it's not being used, let's lower that assessment or vice versa if we haven't been taxing it enough to pay for costs. I don't know how to.
It's really set up for the townships to be doing, doing that, and with it, it's tougher since it's an unorganized township.
Well, and this was the township that had the most benefits to gain by organizing when we did the township task force, so hint hint.
How many, how many you need for a township board? One, two, three, four, we got enough?
Yep, so, okay, were there any other comments as we walk, walk through all of this? So I'm gonna circle back to the tough question. A hundred percent of the residents who live there today approve this. In the future, if we have someone come in next week, they have a hundred residents, ninety of them say we wanna do it. Are we gonna give them the thumbs up and make those ten pay too?
What's the mechanism that we would use within the law to force somebody to pay if we went down that road? I'm not saying we wanna do that, but.
Statutes, nowhere in the statute does it say the landowner has to agree because they can petition it. If they disagree, they can petition it to a vote. But nowhere in here does it say we have to get agreement from the landowners.
I think that's.
It's more of our.
Responsibility.
It's more of our responsibility.
So if ninety percent come in, you're gonna divide um whatever that number is, ninety percent into the total instead of a hundred percent?
We would force it on the ten percent.
Forcing it on the other ten.
Is that's the discussion, I guess.
Yeah, that's the discussion.
Do you force it on the other ten or do you divide it among the ninety?
Are the other ten gonna drive on it?
And the ten get to freeload.
So that's the.
And and I think before we approve this, we need to have that agreement amongst ourselves, that this is, and it needs to be written in there.
Well, that's, that, that really makes it highly improbable that however we want, again, done. Because there's always one person that's gonna.
Correct.
Gonna say no.
Yep, this one's unique.
The other ninety-nine are willing to pay for it. I don't see why we wouldn't do it.
As long as the costs are covered.
Costs are gonna be covered.
Well, and that's the other option is that the ninety percent pay and the ten percent truly freeload, you know.
And that's the way it is.
But I think the number that you're looking for is if you can't get ninety percent done, that would agree to pay. So the question is, how much do you have to have?
To go great.
Well, I think to Don's point is if one per, one percent said they'll pay for the whole dang thing, then it's a done deal. But they're paying for it. That's done, that's your point, right?
Absolutely.
So are you volunteering?
You guys should take the check out, right? It won't flow through though.
No, we're, we're talking if, if a different road, a different road, a random road, yep.
Once, once they refuse to pay, then a legal process can start, is that correct? And that would be short of foreclosure, but it would end in foreclosure.
Well, not really foreclosure, more like a tax or.
And that would be at the expense of the county, too.
Buy your house for six hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Yeah, right.
So. So explain to me why the ten percent in our hypothetical, the ten percent wouldn't be just assessed the same way people are assessed for the pool that didn't want the pool. Why wouldn't you just assess them?
Well, there might be some people that absolutely cannot afford.
Well, they probably shouldn't be living there, then.
Well, I wouldn't like to make that decision.
Me either. The lower it is.
I think there's always gonna be, or almost always gonna be that one person, and they'll gladly drive on the nice road.
Boy, absolutely.
Are there any other examples of counties who've done this?
We couldn't find any.
Not, not in Minnehaha or any, anything like, well, how, how do they fund their roads then? Through just property taxes throughout the whole county? You know?
Minnehaha gets, what does they say, what percent of their budget is opt-out?
They got two opt-outs in place already, but they're all organized, so, and their townships get, get dollars as well. And they have a lot of motor vehicles, so they have a lot of motor vehicle fees.
Let's put it this way, we have the attorney general opinion, and it was this same road.
That many years, two thousand seven was when that was written?
What, 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 because I guess I, I didn't see that in the packet, so, um, what did it say? And, and the question was yes?
Yes.
Could you forward that to us?
Yep, I've got it, I said I would give it to you.
You know, I. I, I don't typically like forcing the tax, but I think my, my stand, assessment, my assessment, I think my, where I would probably lean is, is that ninety percent-ish threshold, and it would be forced upon a hundred percent, and I should say this maybe when Don's here. But I, I say that because, one, they get the benefit of driving on the road, and it's hard to put a monetary value on that, but two, when they go to sell that property, their property values increase and they'll recoup that. And so to me, it's, it's fair, it, it may not be wanted, they might fight it or grumble, but I don't think it's a taking, because they're, they should recoup that, I would think. I'm not real.
Well, I agree with that, everybody wants to drive on a nice road, and yet, nobody wants to pay for it.
Right.
So then do we just move on to next, put it on for the next meeting? Yep, so all of these changes that we talked about, I will get implemented in there. And were we good with Joe's, what he just said about the ninety percent threshold for yes, hundred percent pay? Okay.
I think that's where I would be, I know Don, we'll wait for him to get back.
And it sort of be greater than ninety percent of the total residents? Or what, what?
Landowners.
Well.
That, and it'll have to be the occupied.
And then what's, what's occupied?
Occupied is gonna be question.
A structure.
Parcels with structure.
And existing, so it, it'll be that, that term that will, and we'll use the same term every time.
And then we call this an improvement zone? Okay, and then where, I'm, I don't have a lot of information on this, so like, where in the law does it talk about implementing an improvement zone?
So they were, they're referred to in the resolution, so if you read the first part of the resolution, they're all up there, and you can look those all up.
And, and that, because the, the one issue I guess I have with this is it talks, section thirteen talks about town, township boards doing it, and I understand this is an unorganized township, but from section thirty-two deals with counties, and I haven't seen where in dealing with counties can do a road improvement zone. I know we, we have oversight over an unorganized township, but it specifically mentions township boards, so.
So if everybody wants to do it, and they're willing to pay for it, why do we care? So I, I believe the reason that the county is not specifically listed is I don't know if the county can do it on a county road, but township roads, it applies to, and I just sent you the attorney general's thing, and he had said in there that he felt Yankton County as caretaker of the unorganized township could use these statutes.
Good.
And I just sent it to everybody, everybody's got the attorney generals now.
John, while you step. On this point, if, you know, I, I know that there are a, a number of farmers out there that if they wanted to do a mile to get to a blacked-up road, they could write the check in seconds for the hundred and forty thousand dollars. They could, there's a lot of them capable of doing that. So it could happen, we could get more than just.
Yeah, I could see if someone's gonna build a house eighth of a mile off of county road on gravel, and they wanted that hard surface to their driveway.
Well, I got an email from a constituent that wants three hundred and fourth street paved because it's just dust and being graded all the time.
Well, they'll have an avenue to do so now, so.
I, I think the avenue that was being requested is that the county pay for it. Not that they were interested in doing it themselves.
So Don, while you stepped away, the only comment I had for, I guess, defending if we, if, let's say ninety percent wa- wanted a reason to tax all of them would be just, they are, they would recoup that in, in property value, essentially, that, you know, whenever they did sell or move, and I, there's still gonna be people that'll fight or argue, I think, but to me, that's, I could live with myself for assessing somebody to get a hard surface road to their property in that fashion, I guess.
Uh, Mike, I got a question for you, so this, this includes, this estimate includes the culverts, do any of them have to be repaired, striping, any of that stuff? There's, there's none that need to be, so just some additional gravel, but then also striping when we're done, that's included? Okay, thank you, thank you for that, that's nice that there's no culverts in that road.
Any other?
So, you know, so I, so I'm sure I understand. Take the farmer that wants it. Besides, there's another guy on that road. Does that other guy, can he be forced to do it?
Well, the difference is gonna be egg-zoned or eggland versus residential. Because we, even like in here, we, we are leaving eggland out of that assessment unless they're voluntarily included. So that's where it, because I, it doesn't really address what to do with eggland, correct, Deb? And so I think that is part of this framework, is really to make it clear that this is for, you know, residential zones.
And I can write that in there.
And that might.
This is focused on housing development.
Right.
Does it cover any damage, like, uh, does it cover any damage to the?
Person could.
Any damage, we run the snow pile out and bust a chunk out, who, who pays for damage? I assume the county would, or?
I think typically we just go cold patch it and.
Okay.
My boys don't do that.
What about damage not caused, say, by the county? You know, I just, I don't see it in here, who would pay for that? Unfortunately, that'll, that'll probably happen.
Right.
Well, if it was a gravel road and someone damaged it, the county would, as caretaker of a unorganized township, would take care of it.
There's even been damage to county hard surface roads.
That we.
That, I know just south of me, like, what, two years ago, a trailer lost a tire and drug, drug the axle down the road and tore it up, and we fixed it. Unforeseen things, I think that's unfortunately, that's what the counties, I mean, that's what we're here for. Scheduled maintenance and things of that nature, I would feel those costs get put into this.
Yes, yes, I want to throw a little humor into this. My wife's grandpa, so he was eighty-two or eighty-four years old or something like that, pulled out of the field with a disc on the back and forgot to lift it up. Went a mile down, down to where he turned in and quit farming after that.
Yeah.
Now that'd be time.
Did it pull a little harder than that?
What's that noise? Well, eighty-four, you probably can't hear nothing.
Are there any other details that we need to discuss, anybody has questions, concerns, before we move on? What Sheri, I think is what I'm hearing is volunteering to, to who kind of touch up, address what we have for concerns, work with the state's attorney's office on some of the verbiage, and then we'll.
We have a hand raiser in the back.
I think we'll, yes. As it's in here, it states to, to remove gravel costs, or where did it say that?
Numbers, was it seven? Seven.
That is something that I don't know if we fully landed on that. The cost of improvement less the estimated cost for maintaining a gravel surface will be subtracted. Is that currently posted at thirty?
Yeah. And there's one by our, whether you're right, both ends, yeah.
Maybe you want speed bumps put in there.
There are speed bumps.
Yeah, now that there, there are now, just watch out when you've got a paved road.
Exactly.
Okay, so we, we'll, we'll review this one more time. We have to have this approved by.
Well, and we, and this has to go through a formal hearing, I think we need to send letters to every property affected. So let me look at my thing here, this is the seventeenth.
Has to be approved by July fifteenth.
What, why she's looking at that, is there any way we could maybe resubmit this to the AG office? Because I mean, this decision was made in two thousand nine. You know, is, is that still the consensus of the attorney general? I mean, because.
I think if we have a.
Laws haven't changed.
Well.
I think if we have a, I, somebody could certainly submit it, I would say as long as we have a email or whatever the AG had at that time.
No, the law requires us to notify when the hearing for the resolution will be, so that every owner knows on June twenty-first, we're going to have a hearing and either approve or deny. Because it's gotta be done by July fifteenth. So I think we could probably see a draft one more time, that'd be on the eighth, right? Right at the day after the primary, and then have the hearing on the twenty-first. Wouldn't the, I gotta look, the seventh is the day of the primary. Yeah, so we, we don't meet that day, do we?
So we, we.
Oh, we meet the ninth.
Is it the ninth or the eighth? Okay.
Okay, we meet on Thursday, then.
That was in my commissioner updates. Oh, sure. So, yeah, our next, next meeting is June ninth, not the seventh.
Publish notice fifteen days before the hearing. So we couldn't, we couldn't do it on that, well, then we would be pushed to July fifth to approve it, which technically is before the fifteenth.
Is there time?
Using the old map.
Leave a petition window in there?
That's after, so then they have twenty days to petition after that.
Okay.
We just have to have our action done by the fifteenth of July. So we could.
Well, I, question, yes, oh, yes.
We are still looking for them, for even county roads, they've got them for agriculture development, because we did get one for a grain elevator to do a mile of surfacing, and that project is underway now, but.
The ones that I've seen thus far typically are business or egg-related. Now rural development, I don't know, it'd be worth looking into again. Or even, there may be some more, I, there's a lot of buzz about rural development, and there's a lot of money floating around right now, so it'd be worth doing that again beforehand.
District three.
Yeah.
Well, and, and I think a lot of those, though, are probably going to be focused on new.
Probably new.
Development, so you guys, I hate to say, are established. So once you're established, sometimes it's hard to get money.
Yeah.
I, I'll send an email to district three who, they, they can at least look into that or bet that, but yeah.
Are you done, Joe?
Uh, yes.
I'd like to thank Sheri for doing a great job putting this thing together. And I'd like to thank you five individuals and whoever also helped do this. This is a great example of what citizens can accomplish when they go to work together, so thank you very much.
I agree, second, that was, a lot of work by Sheri, and Deb's put a lot of time into this as well, and so, Mike as well, so.
Guys would make good township board members.
I have, I have a whole packet ready to go for that.
We probably should, we probably should do that.
Have a packet ready.
Do, do you have a co- a point of contact when this is redrafted to send?
You bet, I will, the milkies, I'll send it out.
Just so you're, have that ready, because it will, so the plan, the plan is to have this at the June ninth meeting for final review, correct? Or no, we don't have time?
Do, well, we can either do another draft, or if you want a final review, we have time to notice it. We have to have fifteen days to know.
My final review is the draft.
Okay, so we're going to do a draft on the ninth.
Yep.
And then we, to get the fifteen days in.
My final review, I mean, we, we want this locked down June ninth.
So we're going to lock it down on June ninth and then we're going to vote July fifth.
July fifth.
And that's just in time for. The fifteenth deadline and I'm right on that, right? The fifteenth. I just want to make sure. Sometimes I. I don't like cutting it that close, but our, our meetings aren't quite spaced fifteen days apart.
Yeah.
So it'll be fine. And we've got budget hearings in June as well.
I think it's worth. I just perceive if it's on for the June ninth to finalize, there's going to be questions.
There'll be too many changes and, and you can make changes at the hearing, but it's not wise.
So it'd be nice to have this. Ninety-nine point nine percent done at the June ninth meeting and then. Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, ideally, we should have this better than up ju- the July fifth meeting, it should be on the agenda and it should be agenda item, whatever. Vote and move on. Should be to that point. So, okay, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
We take a five minute.
Item, uh, if you would like to make a motion.
Make a motion for five minute break.
Second.
Motion in a second, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now at a five minute break. Thank you. Motion. Fox, second by. Get ready, go back into session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, we are now back in session. Item seven, hogbird plot.
We have plot of lot forty-two being a replat of lots forty and forty-one, Wildwood Park Edition in section three, Township ninety-three North. Range fifty-five west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota, and they're just combining their two lots into one.
Move approval.
Second. Motion in a second, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item eight, approve April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two consolidated board of equalization.
I would move the approval of April twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two consolidated board of equalization minutes.
Second.
Motion by Fox, second by Lost to approve consolidated board minutes. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. April twenty-ninth, board of equalization minutes.
Move approval, second.
Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. May third, twenty-twenty-two, regular commission meeting minutes.
Uh, before we move approval, the action twenty-two, twenty-seven Z is wrong. It shows that all present voted aye, motion carried five to zero, and that was the Posh, Thomas Posh. Resolution and that's not correct. I abstained as I did with twenty-two, twenty-zero Z. No.
No, twenty-two, twenty-two zero is correct.
Yes. First one, twenty-two. Twenty Z is correct. Twenty-two, twenty-seven Z is incorrect. Other than that. I'm good.
I would move to approve the May third minutes with the corrections noted.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item nine, claim.
Just a second, we've got a.
We've got.
We've got a note. So. There is a Fox and Youngberg claim that's listed as sixteen thousand, two hundred seventy-nine dollars and seventy cents. That, that listed there should be fifteen thousand. And then we should have a mental illness claim of one thousand, two hundred seventy-nine dollars and seventy cents. That claim should have been split into two categories.
And the fifteen thousand would go to.
Public defenders.
Defender and the.
And the twelve seventy-nine seventy is mental illness.
But as far, far as their then existing contract that was rolling over from. Month to month. Yankton County mental illness were included in that, were they not? Under the fifteen thousand.
Oh, okay. Okay. So that correction is made.
And this is the one that I cannot vote on because the claims were improperly combined.
So I'd move approval of the claims with the correction noted.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain?
One extension.
Okay. Auditor treasurer report and full cash report.
Move approval, second.
Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, that brings us to public comment. Would anybody in the audience care to make a public comment? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. Commissioner updates. Anybody have anything in particular?
I believe it's National Emergency Management or Emergency Medical Services Week, so shout out to our ambulance department and the great work that they do.
Next Tuesday, May twenty-fourth at seven PM is the meeting for. Public input for raising the road, four hundred thirty-first street going over the Jim River. And that will be at the basement of the Stone Church. Mike's going to have it in the paper, I think he said three times. I think it might print tomorrow and then a couple more times, so.
Would you please?
Yeah.
What day did you say?
Tuesday, May twenty-four, seven PM.
I'm sorry, what time?
Seven.
Seven PM.
According to my calendar, I, I have a District Three. Meeting at Mitchell. On the twenty-fifth.
And then the eight county meeting, that's still a month off, right?
Yeah, it's in June.
In June, so I guess it's not too far off, because.
Do we know what, what day in June it is? So I can bring it down. I got it.
We don't have another meeting until.
I got, I have June fifteenth is what I got.
Okay.
At thirteen hundred.
And I've got Sherry and.
That'll be in. In Olive, correct?
Most likely I will actually be able to make this one. Not going to commit to it yet, though. Could not.
I'm going to have to check. I'm supposed to be having a jury trial the fifteenth and the sixteenth, but depends on how many fall out ahead of me.
Yeah, I'll be there.
I did, I did also, Joe, attend the, the monthly thrive meeting this weekend. Last weekend. Things are moving along. They get challenges like everybody.
Yeah.
But they seem to be. Getting some. Good progress made.
Uh, Missouri Sedimentation Action Coalition meeting Friday, the twentieth at ten.
Correct.
One other thing, I, I know it hasn't been a problem in the, in the past unless somebody has an issue with it, Memorial Day Ceremony. At the Yankton County Veteran. Memorial on. The thirtieth. At. Don't have the time, but I believe it's at eleven o'clock.
Correct.
Unless there's an issue with that.
I do not have an issue. Uh, we've held a Memorial Day service out. For, for the past years. So it's.
Thank you.
You'll coordinate with Jeff.
Yeah, I'll coordinate with him so it looks.
Invite Gary.
Dress, right dress, pardon me.
Invite Gary.
Yeah.
I'll give him your email.
Okay. I just have quick, just a reminder, June ninth is the next meeting, not the twenty-seventh. And then, um, as Bill had brought up, just for the public at home. If you did sustain storm damage, lost a structure, et cetera, contact the equalization office for adjustments. That might need to be made to your property. Now I would take a motion.
Can, I would make a motion to go into executive session for poor relief issues pursuant to. SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two and twenty-eight dash thirteen and twenty-eight dash thirteen, one point three.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, we are now in executive session.
I would move to go back into regular session.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are now back into regular session.
I would recommend the payment of claims. Twenty-one, two. Oh, six. Oh, I'm sorry. I would move to recommend the payment of. Twenty-one, two, thirty-six, twenty-one, four, forty-nine, twenty-two, one, oh, one, twenty-two, oh, two. Pursuant to SDCL twenty-eight dash thirteen and the total amount of four thousand, two hundred sixteen dollars, forty-five cents.
Motion to approve claims in the amount of four thousand, two hundred sixteen dollars and forty-five cents. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
I moved to deny claims twenty-one dash two dash zero three seven.
I'll start again. Move to deny. Claims twenty-one dash two dash zero three seven, twenty-one dash one dash zero two four, twenty dash two dash zero zero three. Twenty dash three dash those zero zero four, twenty dash four dash zero zero three. Twenty dash four dash zero zero two. Mental illness twenty-one dash four dash zero zero one, twenty-two dash one dash zero four five. Twenty-one dash four dash zero four five, twenty-one dash two dash zero two eight, twenty dash four dash zero zero one. Based on South Dakota codified law, twenty-one dash thirteen dash one dot three, subpart three, twenty-eight dash thirteen dash twenty-seven. Six, eight, twenty-eight dash thirteen dash thirty-four dot one. Twenty-eight dash thirteen dash three, twenty-eight dash thirteen dash one point one and twenty-eight dash thirteen dash thirty-three.
Second.
Motion by Lost, second by Fox to deny said claims. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any items for the next meeting? The West eleventh will be on there. See June ninth.
So, well, the primary will be on there.
The primary canvas will be on there. I, I'd like to just start discussions on. Cell towers.
On what?
Cell towers.
Oh, updating, there's a, it was just on the radio today, money coming to, in the area, they're upgrading internet and stuff, so. So it'll. Yep, West, so West eleventh draft.
Draft, yep.
Cell towers discussion.
Yeah, we should put article. Something. I'll get it to you, but.
Did you have some budget meetings in June?
Do we need to schedule those? Is Patty ready to? Addie?
Are you ready to schedule?
You want to schedule budget?
Budget. Meeting or do you want to wait till after the next meeting?
They have to have their budgets in by June first.
Fridays work better for you?
Fridays always seem to work better.
Better. So are we looking at like the seventh, tenth, the seventeenth, the twenty-fourth?
Be more the end of June. You know, we can have. The initial ones with the department heads, you know, because then we'll have to have, we'll probably do it at maybe a regular mission, commission meeting, you know, the city will come.
For those.
And present theirs and any other, do you want a special one for any other? And some of, a couple of the ones we. Give money to have come in already.
When do you need it done by Patty? When do you need it done by Patty?
Well.
Since September, I have to have the original published and then that cover first is when we have to prove it.
So if, if department heads have their budgets due June first, um, if we target the third-ish weekend in June.
So that's the seventeenth or the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, that give you time to put everything together and then we can schedule ours.
Twenty-fourth will be.
Twenty-fourth, yeah, twenty-fourth.
For me.
Seventeenth.
What do you, you're bit, you, twenty-fourth.
Where, uh, she's a delegate and I'm a precinct committee person.
Okay, so twenty-fourth is out.
Yeah, I could do it the seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Seventeen.
That work?
What, what, what time?
You wanna start nine?
Nine AM.
Or later?
Nine's good.
I, I. I think I can probably be there. I have a, uh, reunion at, at my house with, uh.
Oh, that's that weekend?
The night before?
Is the, what's the next?
Uh, July.
July first, that's not gonna be a good one.
Okay, maybe we should start at one.
Do you wanna start later in the day then?
Ten would be, I, cause I think people are all leaving on, on the seventeenth, but ten would be.
Oh, we can push it then.
That's fine. So ten on the seventeen.
Getting in on the seventeenth or even the sixteenth.
Thirteenth.
Okay, you'll be. You'll be.
Picking them out the door.
He'll be, he'll be tired.
Okay, so ten o'clock?
Budget, yep, on the seventeenth.
Sounds good.
So, and then we'll go from there.
Great. And the, forgot an update, but we will have a department head meeting Thursday that of this week, and so we'll talk about budgets and. Okay, yeah. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Cattery, second by Fox. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.